Welcome to Real Estate Radio Live, an informative and engaging podcast discussing everything you need to know about the world of real estate. Your host, Joe Cachara, provides you with insight and guidance on how to buy, sell, finance, and invest in real estate. He also offers real estate tax management strategies, new construction advice, home improvement tips, and much, much more. And now, to guide you around the world of real estate, here's your host and Real Estate Radio Live team leader, Joe Cachara.
Welcome in, Joe Cachara with Real Estate Radio Live. Thank you for those that continue to follow the show on Facebook, we appreciate that very much. Most of you know if you follow the show, we are doing the show typically on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and we try to stay relatively consistent right around 3:00 Pacific Standard Time in order to keep the followers and people have a good idea when they could tune into the show live. On Facebook, we want to obviously try to get as much exposure on the social media channel as we can. However, we're in the studio here, and we're doing this as a podcast, and then after we finish the show here, it becomes a podcast, and the audio file then gets distributed all over. If you're watching the show or for the first time, if you have not downloaded the podcast, please do so. You could go anywhere online, just type in Real Estate Radio Live, you go to iTunes, Stitcher, our website, RE Radio Live, and get the podcast. We appreciate it, all the folks that download the podcast each month and give us any feedback as well, we continue to get that. Before I start the show and introduce my guest, just a reminder, for almost eight years, we have been doing live radio and podcasts for one focus and objective only, and that is to educate and inform the consumer in and around real estate. So that's what we do, we have great guests like today, content information, and we continue to deliver that, and we're going to continue to do that going into 2020. It's hard to believe we're wrapping up 2019. Speaking of that, I want to get to the topic, so we have our special guest on the line calling in, be kind enough to spend some time with us, Johnny Cummins, he's the city council member with San Jose, City of San Jose, and most of you may have heard about it, it's been in the news, it's been online, of course, and it's been a subject of, a topic we're going to discuss today, and that is Measure E, the new draft, they just drafted a new property bill, assessment bill, and we're going to talk about that with Johnny today. Johnny, welcome in, how are you today?
Wonderful, thank you for having me.
You're welcome, it's our pleasure, thank you for taking the time, and I do want to say I appreciate you and your team reaching out, we contacted, most of every time, you know, most of the time when something like this comes up that we think is pertinent or important to the general public and population, Johnny, we reach out to the papers and some of the city council members and people involved, and very few, very, you know, often, many times, we don't get a lot of response, so I do appreciate that, and I know it's, this is something that's really important to you, and so I appreciate you taking the time to get the message out to our listeners, thank you very much. So, maybe if you could start this way, Johnny, if you don't mind, we give the listeners and the viewers, in this case, a little bit about your background, and then if we could jump into, and give us kind of the genesis, or kind of the, you know, the beginning, or the basics of this Measure E, and then we could jump in and dive in a little bit deeper with it.
Well, my background is of our, I've been a financial advisor before, I think he should also represent, I've worked as a financial advisor for 19 years, started my own business, I know what it's like to have. Came into office with full wage to save money instead of wage to spend money, and I've been really successful doing that. And I'm a council member, I represent the Alvin Valley, the Boston Valley area, all of these communication, go to San Jose, represent a hundred thousand people, they have an economic development community for the city, and the longest serving council member on the board right now, with more than seven years' office.
Very good, thank you for that, I appreciate that. So Measure E, you know, there's a lot of news out there about it, but if, I think the best way to start here, if you could give us a little bit of a background of Measure E, and then the basis of what it's about, and what it's going to mean to the general public.
Well, Measure E, this is a transfer tax, it's a transfer tax that was proposed by the mayor, and it is intended to be on the ballot on, I think, March 3rd election. It is a, basically a 200% increase in current transfer taxes to around $3.30 per one thousand, this will increase to $10,000, it's 80% for $1,000 of the incentive value. It is, it is, it is, any companies under 2 million are exempt, and the price of 5 above 5 million, from what I talked about. So it is a transfer tax, it's also a general tax, it's not dedicated to any people who actually go into the city's coffers, and the office, the city council side has it.
Yeah, thank you for that, that was a really good explanation, and I think that we're going to cover a lot of things here, but I speak for, obviously, myself and many other people, and the people that are part of the show, and for years of, just in general, conversation that, I think it'd be one thing if something is earmarked towards a specific need, you know, we're creating this new tax, whatever it may be, but this, you know, 100 million or 50 million, or whatever that number is, is designed to go towards, you know, homeless or the streets, or something that's concrete, and something that's quantifiable, that this money then goes to, then we could track it, and then figure out if they really did, you know, the job they promised of collecting that money. But you're saying that this is really going to go into the general fund, and then, obviously, from there, they could use this, these funds for whatever they wish, is that true, or a percentage has to go to a certain area?
No, in fact, it's against the law, and it is going to definitely go.
Okay.
I think the first few words to say at all, to fund general city of state services, including, everything after including doesn't really matter, because inconvenience for anything is everything is. The general fund is decided upon by the council, and inconvenience is tied how the budget is spent once a year, in my majority vote, so anybody can bring any special projects that they want, it's basically the $70 million increase for the general fund act.
Got it, okay. And I may mention too, Johnny, that you were one, I think of one of two, or just a few, that are against this, right? I mean, you're against this, and you argued against it, and so if that's the case, if I'm correct there, can you give our viewers and our listeners an idea of, you know, why you're against this particular Measure E?
Well, it's being promoted as something that's going to help us solve our homeless problems, but in fact, none of the money can be dedicated, it's not dedicated, and while I believe that this mayor and the council are very serious about spending the money in these deals, because it's a general fund act, none of it has to be spent on homeless, this on building out, none of it has to be spent necessarily, so there's just no accountability. My objective is, in fact, I tried to ask, make it dedicated, so we have accountability, and I didn't find my vote, but even my amendments weren't accepted, so it went forward as a general tax, and all it required is a percentage of one vote to pass.
Okay. Does it seem, in general, I think, one of, again, the part of the frustration, I'm sure, and you probably hear it, I mean, and you're a businessman, I think that's a great background to come and do what you're doing now in politics, is that there seems to be when there's a problem that arises, or when something needs to be fixed, let's just raise taxes, I know it's not that simple, but, or tax something, and in a state that is so heavily taxed already, and you know this as well as anyone, that's why you're, you know, you're working up against this, that, does it bother you or concern you, and I know that you're, I mean, maybe your vision was when you got in the office, there were you going to try to change a little bit, is that, that, instead of looking at things like a business, or really trying to analyze something, and trying to find creative ways to raise money, or attack something, that do we just automatically assess another tax on something?
Well, I can tell you that we are being taxed quite heavily, I actually have my tax bill for my property.
Oh, boy.
There's 17 taxes.
Amazing.
They're actually not the property taxes though.
Amazing.
So yes, we keep going to the well to fix our problems, and we can start looking internally and spending our money wisely, yet, one of the reasons why I object to this one is there's no accountability, and all our spending on this, on solving the problem, that our mention is about that, even though their mention, none of the money has to be spent.
Yeah. What would your, I mean, you have the floor, obviously, you have the floor now, and we're speaking to the community, what would your solutions be, or some of the ideas and suggestions be, instead of what they're doing here, and just putting money into the general fund, what would be your take, or what would be your opinion of what should happen here?
Well, we have a lot of money coming in from various sources, money's coming in from nonprofits, money coming in from Google, Cisco, 20 million is coming in from Apple, and then we also have tax revenues just coming into the state, you know, it's used state by thousands of taxes, like housing, it's also in county, after more than $1 million in parcel taxes, you know, and so why don't we just look at the money we do have, and do that, before we go and ask for more money? That's my argument, instead of driving up costs, like United States has taxed, what happened in its first relationship, taxing the lower housing, every time you raise the price of transactions, taxes based on cost of building.
Right.
So, I don't know how we expect to manage costs, how we can, in, in, expenses.
Yeah. And I, you know, regardless of what side of the aisle anybody's on, or me, or this conversation, I think just by reading through this, the assessments on properties that are over 2 million, with up to 5 million, and then we talked about the additional assessment that goes, and the money that's collected, is there, I'm sure there's a specific reason, right? Is it seems like it's, again, another one of these, well, it really doesn't affect that many people, but you and I were talking a little bit before we started the call, and got on air here, that, you know, Silicon Valley is not like being in Waterloo, Iowa, I mean, the average home, in some cases, could be close to 2 million.
Well, there are homes that'll be affected, but more, even more, is that, you know, this will actually increase the price of developing property.
Hmm, okay.
It's about making it easier to develop, so that we can, so we can have more developers get to produce housing here, and one more, one more fee that'll be added to the already exorbitant amount of fees, that are basically impact fees, and other fees that are being forced to pay for, in the end, the people that are really paying for the consumers to want supply of housing, and if you are renting, they can do a cost of more to rent your house, using that for the developer's own building.
Right.
That's the only one, I think, makes this actual action further of, that should make the housing question that we're already in.
Right. And again, to touch on this, kind of piggyback what I just said, in general, when you make a, let's just call it for what it is, when you, when you assess a tax, or you look at something to add a tax to, and you make it, and the assumption, I'm guessing, again, tell me if I'm wrong, or maybe, the assumption is, we could probably do this, or it's not going to hurt as much, because people that have properties over 2 million are probably doing pretty darn good, so this shouldn't be that big of a deal. Is that too simplistic, or is that kind of the way it's looked at sometimes?
Although, I think, I think it is that simple, and that's the way things are going to be, taxes, taxing, taxing, we're going to have money, your money, and, and Blue Bill Housing Board, either one of those things is correct, a lot of homeless people who are limited income tax, they have a lot of equity in their expensive homes, they're going to be subjected, not only to the increase in the value of the property taxes, you know, the, 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 so many taxes that they already pay, there's going to be just one more, that they have to pay, and that means that they have a lot less to live on, and they've had it down somewhere. And the other perception is that all this money is included, fixed on housing, like using all this money to pay housing, that's not true, either that's on the game, because this is a general fund act, so I, I disagree with both of you.
Yeah, I would agree to 100%, and I, I know that I go and kind of have the notes here, but I read through it several times, I want to say, is it San Francisco, and Oakland, or Berkeley, or some of those already implemented this, similar to what they're proposing here? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
San Francisco, they have, they have this type of tax, and, you know, just how cheap this is, my house, I don't think that we should be using San Francisco, and Oakland as a model of this, that's working.
Yeah.
It's a great, it's a great model of how it's, does it work.
Yeah, well said. And I know this is maybe too much common sense for the average person that looks at this stuff, but, you know, from a consumer perspective, or anyone else in general, and it'd be great to get, you know, feedback across the board, but, I mean, for me, you know, as a person who manages business, and started business, and understand that, but also the community, and how we need taxes for infrastructure, and help, and all that, understanding all that, I think a better sell would be, you know, if the city came to us, or any, any group, right, for that matter, and said, hey, listen, we're excited, we just studied San Francisco and Berkeley for the last three years, and because of what we did to ABC, and you can, you can call any city, because we did the ABC and collected X amount of dollars, look at what we've been able to do for the homeless, or the roads, or whatever, when someone comes to you with concrete evidence of raising taxes, and look at the benefit of the community, and the taxpayer, et cetera, et cetera, I think it's easier to swallow, wouldn't you say?
Well, I can tell you, I've been fixing to find a, I'm in an office, the last tax we passed here in San Jose was called Senator Keith's, the last tax that was paid for, you know, police, fire, and payments, you know, we're getting our payments. Well, we did have that paid for police, but we didn't pay for any of the other things, we had raised one more tax for some of the other things, and even that tax, it's supposed to be a general fund tax, don't go where it's supposed to go, it may go wherever the city council side acts, it's going to get rid of you.
Yeah. Hey Johnny, do you, I'm sure this happens, but one of the other things I'm curious of, and I hear about, and I wanted to ask you, is you guys must study, or are there other counties, or cities, or states that are kind of models, role models for, look at what they've done, in order to bring back this evidence to the City of San Jose, or anybody else for that matter, that's saying, you know, look what they did in Milwaukee, or Chicago, or Texas, wherever it may be, look at what they did, and is there something we can model around that, or do we have a tendency to live in our own little bubble, and kind of create these things within a vacuum?
Well, I can tell you that the state senate often looks at our base, San Francisco, Oakland, and Seattle, and most of the areas that here, that the staff, if they go, if they're trying to do things like this, I would say that those are not working moms.
Yeah.
And I would say that they're exactly family moms. How, how to make them work, and it's, I think, now that correction, you know, that this is, that it's what I, you know, what I put there, and what we're missing out.
Yeah. And I don't want to sidetrack too much, but just ironically, timing wise, yesterday I had a guest on the show, and his company, and his business is based around, I think it's called LeavingTheBayArea.com, and so I think roughly, I don't know, 700,000 people, or I think they left, I think that's the California number, but, kind of related to this, do you, do you worry sometimes that, I mean, I know that we've got this great place to live, and that the job market's great, and the climate's great, and geographically we're, you know, connected to so many different other areas, and we could go on and on, and why it's so great, such a great place to live and work. However, there does reach a breaking point for people and businesses where it just becomes too much, and I'm sure that's discussed, but do you ever, does that ever concern you with this area of California, as it relates to taxes, and making it more expensive for people and businesses?
Absolutely, I'm trying to use the word tax of California. The first thing we do is, with what are the taxes tomorrow, quite frankly, you know, there's so many new taxes that are also being proposed, you know, that are going to be further prompter.
Yes.
Or changes, or, or, of course, there's a lot of problems, so we could be, they have to be going back to the well and asking people for more money, so I think it's quite a bit of money, like I said, and the, and the, and the, and the, and the, and the, and the way it's been presented, and continuing to raise tax rates. Now, we're going to, we're going to.
Very good. We're going to, we're going to switch gears a little bit, we're going to chat a little bit about the state senate seat, and some of the stuff you're doing, for not only continue to do more for the community, and your hard work in that area, but real quickly, we'll do it at the end of the show too, Johnny, but if anyone's watching the show, listening to the show later, and they want to reach out to you or your team, to find out more how they could help, or any feedback, or for that matter, how would they reach anybody about, you know, that might be, you know, in other words, just whatever they could do for this cause, or have their word heard, how would they reach out?
Well, you can email me at Johnny, that's J-O-H-I-N-Y, at JohnnyCummins.com, so, J-O-H-I-N-Y, A is in A, A is in Apple, and this is very, 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 first name, at firstnameoutfit.com, that's how you can reach me, the most easily, I felt very easy to reach you by email, and I took the first one, that's, it is very handy.
Very good, thanks. And we'll give that out again before we, before I let you go today. So let's talk a little bit about, I mean, you obviously have done a great job, we appreciate it, by the way, thank you, for myself, and I'm sure a lot of listeners feel the same way, we all have a busy lives doing what we do, and it's always good to know that you have representatives of people in the city, and the city council, that are, that are really working hard every day, and for the cause of the people, so thank you, we appreciate that. State senate, tell us a little bit about that, I know you're running, what's, what's the, the goal, the objectives, and what are you trying to do, and how can we help?
Well, it's a state goal, and propping city councils, and state goal is to be bringing the state senate, I want to make sure our money is then wisely collected, for example, on one, we collected from Bob Sisk, which was past 2,004 millions of dollars, that was supposed to help mentally ill people, and, and facilities, but I have seen nothing being done to help mentally ill homeless people, or all for our space, magnetically growing, ever since we allowed other prisons to be downsized, while all prisoners leaving. So this is one of the, one of the topics that I want to go in there and find out how we're spending the billions of dollars that were supposedly dedicated to mental health.
Yeah.
Another topic that I'm familiar with, is the town, the prison system, so we passed about 47, 736, 81, a lot of prisoners are being released from jails because of the reform, and while I believe that many of you are reforming this area, I think it's still unfortunate that, I don't think that these prisoners that are being released are getting the assistance, that maybe, to be permanently rehabilitated, they basically get voluntary services, they go and try to get drugs, and, and, or try to get, um, help, but, actually, the matter is, most of them end up being homeless on our space, and many of them are being committed to state crime, and going to jail a person, so most of them, obviously, but in a nutshell, I want accountability, accountability in our prison forms, accountability for the money that we are dedicating for mental health services, and accountability in general for transportation, which is another issue that I'm worried about, we have passed the bill that's acting, and we haven't seen much of it on our side, and not much of new services as far as mobility.
Yeah. You know, I've always thought, I know it's simplistic, and I know it's not this easy, but I've always thought if somehow, some way, we could try to run the cities, the governments, the states, almost, you know, with the same business practice, as you use the word accountability, I think it's wonderful, in the sense that, if you were, if this was a business, if the City of San Jose was a business, I know everybody doesn't look at it that way, because it's not easy to, but, you know, how would you grade the City of San Jose as a business? If we were looking at it and saying, gee, you know, how do they use money, how do they represent themselves, how do they solve the problems, and I know it's different, because it's not a profit center, but, in general, I think what you said really resonates, and I think it's just a lack of accountability, would you say?
Absolutely, it's something that's my best, my best, my best, and we created a lot more accountability in the city, I've been in office, so, former mayor's been in office leading these efforts, for example, is, is one of the things that he's done, that I've done personally, is ask for staff to move, and leases that they're leasing out of other owners of property, and they go and call it empty buildings, and I want to find out why we're leasing buildings, where we have empty buildings, and in my first year, we looked at ways, we've been able to save millions of dollars after I asked them, stop waiting for the problem, we are including in house buildings, and that's just one of the many things that I have made in the long, the discussion on accountability, what we, what we talk, my staff talks, the people that are residents, we call them customers, and I want to change that attitude, they are not just residents, they're not people who are calling and complaining, they are our customers, and I feel that, and the person is that, I mean, my sense here, here.
Yeah. I almost wonder if, and I know you have it, and you see the benefits from it, as you bring your, your philosophy, and your approach, and your skill set to, to what you're doing now, but, I almost wonder if it shouldn't be a requirement for every city council member or people to get into that, those positions, to take some kind of MBA business program or something, to have an understanding of, the basic knowledge of, you know, the P&Ls, and money in, and money out, I know it sounds pretty basic, but, you know, the, I keep coming back to what you're saying, I think accountability really covers most of it.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, I wish, I wish that were the case. Economics classes, what have you, I can tell you that I'm asking staff, look at customer service training, and anybody, so you've been, we've had a program for the last year, to train our building and planning department, people in customer service training, and any of the other call centers, in customer service training, and that I can tell, that it's a change in attitude, and I love that, that we have to treat our constituents, people that collect them as customers, because otherwise, we're going to treat them as another cash machine, that's basically your problem.
Yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Couple of things, I know we don't have a whole lot of time to dive deep into this, but would you say that I think most people would, as they kind of take a broad view at 30,000 feet above, looking down, and kind of looking at, and this is not just unique to San Jose, but most cities, they'd say, you know, we have a housing challenge, a lack of housing, we also have a homeless, a homeless problem we're trying to solve, would those be, I know transportation is too, but would those two be pretty serious concerns right now, as you, as you take a look at that, housing in general, the shortage of it, not enough, now obviously affordable housing's another story, and then the homeless issue?
Absolutely, and there's still people, make the buck a lot, they are related, they're definitely separate homeless, just get housing, for separate items, and many of the homeless people are on our, are mentally ill, and many of them are drug addicts, so if you build them a, you know, a Taj Mahal, and they won't be able to take care of themselves. So we have to have a wraparound, housing, the services, you know, basically, and we are doing that, many, have been, many programs have been created, we've created many new housing developments, to tackle this housing problem that's been growing, and prisons have started, prisons have started releasing prisoners, but the fact of the matter is, it's grown going faster than what we can create housing, and that affects that, we keep, we're concentrating on homeless, until we've taken our eyes off, creating a low rate of unemployment, and we need to, well, quite frankly, the savings, it's huge, that whatever savings that we're getting from all these prisoners releases are being brought back in housing, these people are, that they're really causing the housing problem, and it's being exacerbated, so, you know, a lot more needs to be done on housing, and I think a better way is to reduce regulations, because, so we tried it with ADUs here, I don't know if.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And you can tell, I mean, at the end of we reduce the cost of the, of the regulations, it's spiked up, in like, you know, 10, 12 ADUs a year, we have 328 because we reduce the, so, and reduce regulations.
Right, right.
And that's what we need to do for the rest of the housing project, it's not just the smaller housing.
Yeah, make it easier for everyone, if you, if you have a problem, how does everybody come together and do their part in solving it, right? I mean, I know, that's kind of the simple way to look at it.
Yeah, exactly, so the state, the state has caught on to ADUs, they're, you know, they're.
Yes, yes.
A lot more of them, the state has caught on to it, we're creating a whole, you know, ADU.
Yes.
And so, we're serious about that, and I wish we could get serious about all the other types of, 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 of.
Yeah, real quick on the ADUs, because that is a popular topic, do you think they'll, they'll relax some of those restrictions even more? I know they've been relaxed, and I know it's easier to get permits, and, but it is still a pretty costly venture, but do you, do you see any of that changing still, or are they just trying to make improvements as we go here?
Well, on Tuesday, we eliminated all fees, all impact fees.
Oh.
ADUs that are under $750 square foot.
Great.
It's that state.
Okay, great.
We have eliminated that, that impact duty on those, on those units that are under $750, changed the requirement of, you can build an ADU up to 1200 square feet, plus you have 9,000 square foot of law.
Wow.
We're actually doing a lot, even at, even at the Chivasian Block, we were, a couple days ago, we voted to relax regulations even more than we have over the past 10 years.
Wow. A real quick side note, I guess I could check with someone, who would, I'd love to get someone on the show here, that's very, very specific, and an expert, expert in this ADU, because that is a big topic, and I think, even though people know more about it, I think more education would help.
Yeah, we'd be happy to, there's actually an ADU, her name is Sarah, she's the head of the. Yeah, we'd be happy to, there's actually the ADU, her name is Sarah, she's the head of.
Oh, okay.
Building and planning.
Great, all right. Well, a couple more minutes left Johnny, I want to make sure, how, so how could our viewers, our listeners support and what do they need to do to help you with the state senate? Give us some timelines, what can we do, what kind of message can we get out, what, what can we do to help?
Well, if people want to keep this responsibility and accountability being talked about at the state legislature, I'm hoping that they know this is important behind me, and if they, and if they do, many things can happen, you know, many things that can be done, small consultations on the website, that's, that's JohnnyKamis.com, you can post a blog site, you can also order it on the, on the website as well, you can get involved, you can have a child friend, you know, other friends, you know, you know, Los Angeles, San Jose, Los Angeles, San Antonio, those are all areas that are within the state senate district.
Great. So they go to your website, Johnny Kamis, or Kamis, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, dot com, they could contribute there, they could find out more, how they could help, and when, when is the timeline on that? When does that, the voting and the ballot start in terms of that?
Well, ballots drop on February 5th.
Okay.
March 3rd.
Okay.
Love to get your support. Again, if you want somebody who's going to be talking differently, please help us get your support.
Very good. Well, if you want to come back on the show in the next month or so, or whatever we could do to help, we do appreciate your time and we appreciate you, you know, in the city council at this point in San Jose, fighting for, you know, the people that, for our voice and, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but I am speaking for a lot of people that pay taxes here and it's good to have someone on our side and fighting for that cause. So thank you Johnny, appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely, my pleasure.
All right, thanks again for your time Johnny, we'll have you back on a little bit later, appreciate it and thanks for sharing this information on this very important topic of Measure E for us.
Well, my pleasure, my pleasure.
All right, take care Johnny.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Great, great interview, if I say so, I mean Johnny's a great interview, a lot of great information, you know, I, obviously I don't speak for everyone, but this is a great, great vehicle for we get, you know, thousands and thousands of, you know, 10, 11 plus thousand people that download this podcast each month, so there's a lot of people that are concerned about the city, obviously they live here, they work here, there's people coming in, coming out, they need to know more. This is just yet another example, Measure E, and, and just, I think, we would agree, I think a lot of people, it's easy to say that, hey, well, you know, it's not a big deal, it doesn't affect that many people because this is homes or properties over 2 million dollars, but as Johnny mentioned, it, it does affect a lot of people, it affects building, regulation, and remember, it also affects commercial. So anytime there's an additional tax on commercial, guess what? That means additional costs to business. We want to try to promote and build small business and big business, we need business in our community and, you know, we don't want to chase them away. So really, really, a great, great message, and so if anybody wants more information about this, obviously go to the city of San Jose's website, and if you want to support Johnny or stay in touch with him, it is johnnykamis.com, again, J-O-H-N-N-Y-K-A-M, I'm sorry, K-H-A-M-I-S dot, or go to that website, you could donate or actually support any way or any cause that he's doing. Thanks again for tuning in, thank you for those that are watching on Facebook, we appreciate it. If you haven't downloaded the podcast, please go to reradiolive.com. Thanks again for tuning in and checking in today, have a great afternoon and take care.
You've been listening to Real Estate Radio Live. For more information on today's program, visit reradiolive.com. That's reradiolive.com. Subscribe to our podcast. Discover more at reradiolive.com.